Don't you like that background better, though? Change that. It's getting no filter on. Good. There we go. All right. How are we doing there, Pete? You ready to rock and roll?
Yep.
Gus, you ready to rock?
Yep.
All right. Good? Okay, we'll let Mike get the mic together. You're good? Okay. All right, so close that up. All right, so why don't we kick things off here tonight for the Medfield Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. This meeting will be held in hybrid format. The Select Board will attend here in person, and members of the public may attend in person, as I see right now. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so. Go to the town website, go to the calendar, you'll see tonight's meeting. The Zoom link is there, and for those that don't have access to the computer, if you just want to dial in, that is there as well. And then the info packet is there, so you can follow along with the various documents we have here in front of us this evening. This meeting is going to be, or is being, I should say, video recorded. So before we kick things off, what I would like to do is take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you very much. All right, so let's kick things off tonight with appointments. We are going to have a public hearing for solicitor's license. We've got two groups. So Mark, do I kick off open a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, opening a public hearing.
Actually, they're separate, so.
Open one, close one?
I handle the remodeling one and the solar one separately.
Okay. All right, so we'll kick off with the Power Home Remodeling.
Okay, let me promote Matt.
Do we have him?
Matt is here to speak to you.
All right, I see Wise, I see Manning. Okay, so Wise is the second group. We've got Manning, Ollie, Cronin, Kennedy, Krulyn, Johnson, Reckless, and Belcher?
Yes, Matt is representing all of them, I believe.
Okay. All right, and did you just promote him?
Yes.
Oh, I gotta close my thing so I can see that. All right, there we go. Good evening, Matt. Matt, you're on mute. There we go. How you doing? Doing well, thanks. So typically how we go about this is if you can just give us an overview of the days and hours and timeframe, though I'm gonna kind of jump in front of you for the timeframe. We typically do 90 days, so if you're looking for anything beyond that, we typically do 90. Then you can always come back and renew if things go well, but I will pass it to you and you can give us an overview.
Now, Ben, chair.
Yeah.
In this particular.
Wait, wait, one sec, sorry, I'm being corrected by our council.
What we've had is a whole bunch of solar ones.
Yeah.
Why don't you also ask him to describe what it is, the nature of their business?
Okay, fabulous. All right.
Perfect. Yep, so thank you guys for having me on tonight. So basically, yes, we're Power Home Remodeling, name of the company. What we do is we actually do external replacement of windows, roofing, siding, doors, gutters, trim work, and attic insulation. And then basically what we do as solicitors is we go door to door in these towns and we'll see if there's anybody in the town that's of interest or could use a free estimate on any of those said projects. And then our job at the door there is to just give them some information on us as a company, find a good time that's gonna work for them as homeowners, to have one of our remodeling consultants come out, measure up that project that they're interested in, and then give them a free price on what that project would be. With that, they also get a guaranteed price for an entire calendar year, so that price is guaranteed not to go up for 365 days from the day that we give it to them. So it's not anything that they're obligated to buy from us or anything that they're obligated to do with us by any means, but it's just a good starting point for a lot of homeowners that may not know exactly where to start for these types of projects. We are gonna be, assuming we approved, we would be out in the community Monday through Friday between the hours of 10:00 and 6:30, as well as on Saturdays, we like to operate 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And if you guys have any.
Pete, any questions?
Matt, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
We can't hear you, Matt.
Oh, you know what?
Hold on, Matt.
I thought he stopped and was waiting for us.
I mean, is it even a meeting if you don't have technical difficulties?
That's weird, he was on a roll and all of a sudden.
Now we can hear you.
Okay, now you're laughing, okay.
All right, perfect. See, I probably got the last part of, we like to operate Monday through Friday, 10:30 in the morning until 6:30. I know there are towns that do have rules and regulations that might require people to be out of the town by darkness. If that's the case, we can work around that as well. And then Saturdays, we're out typically 9:30 until 1:30 in the afternoon. Again, if there's any other hours that might need to be adjusted, we can adjust our schedules for what your town requires. That's basically the gist of what we do and how we kind of operate.
Do you have a question, Mark? Go ahead.
Do you probably?
Okay.
So Matt, thank you for the presentation and the explanation, and I'll just share with you that I had someone knock on my door around 6:30, 7 o'clock last night trying to sell me solar. And I would suggest that it is probably best if we do it until dark. It's kind of, it's a different thing when somebody knocks on your door at night when it's dark. So that would be my only suggestion, Matt. Thanks for the presentation.
Yes, thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, I would echo Pete's. I actually think it's in your interest to do it, because I don't think, the comments I've heard back from people in town that have had somebody come to their door at night probably doesn't set you up for success, and I'm guessing that by another month, month and a half from now, it's a moot point if you're only going till 6:30 anyway, because it'll be light out, so that I don't think.
Yeah, that's what we've kind of tried to work that around, is that time being where daylight savings is gonna come in.
And I'm gonna ask a dumb question. Are you representing both? Are we, are we having, I just kind of lost track.
Two separate hearings.
Yeah, sorry, just Power Home Remodeling.
This is just Power, okay.
Anything to do with solar.
Yeah, so I think, and again, to Eileen's point, we, I think the form actually says you can apply for a year, but we only do 90 days. And what that would mean is, we probably wouldn't give you a hard time if we haven't heard any complaints from anybody in 90 days, and you come back and say, I want to keep going, then that's, so you kind of understand that you have that opportunity, and it's not likely to be a problem unless you've created a problem in the way you've knocked on people's doors in the dark late at night or something like that, so.
Absolutely. But yeah, 90 days would be plenty of time for us here.
Yeah, and so I know daylight savings kicks in the weekend of March 9th, so I think for the next, let's just say, two weeks, you probably want to scale it back so that you're not knocking on somebody's door. But I know the challenge you have is, the reason you're coming a little bit later is the people working. If you've got the husband and wife both working, you're not gonna catch them at 2:00 in the afternoon, so hence why you're trying to catch them a little bit later. But your opening remarks were spot on. It's not like you're there to pitch them, it's like, okay, we've had a chance to knock on the door, this isn't a good time, but you are interested, when can we come back? When we're not interrupting dinner or whatever. So I've had guys and gals knock on my door, and they've been very respectful to that.
I did have one other question. Are you joining this meeting from Christine's office? I'm just looking at the.
It does look like my office, doesn't it?
Yeah, it is. A little eerie.
He's gonna come around the corner.
Looks just like the couch she has for her afternoon nap.
Wow, that's kind of scary.
So, so I think if you're just conscious for the next two weeks of not doing it after, to Pete and Gus's point of knocking on the door when it's dark, it's just a little more intimidating. And then I will kind of coach you, there are some people in town, and be very conscious with this with your team, that very clearly have on their doorway no solicitors, and when people do knock on the doors, we get the emails or the phone calls. So it's, it's not worth trying to do the hard sell, just move right along, otherwise that's when you get the phone calls and then we hear about it. But yeah, if you, 90 days works here. The hours, as we look at going into March 9th, when the sun will be up a little bit longer, thank goodness, and the weekends are fine, that's typically what we look for is Saturday.
And the only other thing, I think you guys have applied before, they recognize the name.
Yeah, our company's definitely been in Medfield before, and I don't know exactly how many times or when the last time was, but we try and get into towns and let you guys not have us in the town for.
So you may already know.
A period of time.
You may already know this, but when you do, when you do have somebody in town, you should let the police department know, because if people see someone wander around from door to door, they call the police department, and if they know you're there, they know who it is that's authorized to be here. If you let them know ahead of time that you're gonna be, you know, going around town during the day, it's just, it helps keep.
Helps everybody, yeah.
It does.
Yep, perfect. We'll definitely make sure we're checking in with them before we go out there.
Mark?
So, the, the company, Power Home Remodeling, does the company actually do the work that you contract with people to do?
Yep, so we, we do both. So we do have our own crews that do specific projects for us, and then we also have contracted out projects as well. It just kind of depends on the availability of our crews and the, the scale of the project, I guess you would say, for what we're actually doing for a homeowner, is gonna kind of depend on if they're gonna get one of our crews, or if they're gonna get a subcontracted crew, but the homeowners are gonna be made aware of, before they ever sign documents, what's gonna be the deal for their type of project that they're gonna be signing up for.
Now, is your company and any third-party contractors you are using registered with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as home improvement contractors?
Correct, yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're good.
Unless anybody.
Any questions from the audience? Okay.
I move that we approve the request from Power Home Remodeling for authorization to solicit through town, initial period of three months, hours, Monday through Friday, 10:30 to sundown, or not later than 6:30, and Saturdays between 9:30 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon.
Mark, should we close the hearing?
Yeah, technically.
You should close the hearing first.
Okay, close the hearing.
You can declare it closed.
Declare it closed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All voted.
All voted. Perfect. Thank you very much. You are good.
Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so we'll open a hearing now for the second solicitor, which is Boundless Energy, and our representative is, oop, I can see the paperwork here.
An exercise company, it sounds like.
Yeah, Foster Wise, and I believe.
Yeah, I'm promoting him now.
Okay. Hi, Foster, how are you?
Pretty good, how are you doing? Thanks for having me tonight.
No, welcome. So what we like to typically do here is just, you can give us kind of an introduction to the company, what you're looking to do, as we just said to the gentleman before you, we have typically a 90-day window, and then you can always come back and renew, but would be intrigued to hear your, what you're up to, your hours requested, et cetera.
Yeah, did you say time and hours requested?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would probably prefer six months as opposed to three months, but if you guys were sticking on the three months, then I could always come back in three months. My time period for, for working is definitely not after dark. I, I don't like to do that, that actually makes me feel uncomfortable. So I'm usually knocking and working with homeowners somewhere, sometime in the late morning to, you know, before it gets dark. Right now, up until about 4:30, something like that. Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturday.
Foster, on your application, you, I wasn't sure what you were saying, it was Monday through Friday, Saturday maybe, and it said 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It sounds like those aren't the correct times.
Yeah, 7:00 p.m. more, like we were talking about before with daylight savings, sometimes it could be 7:00 p.m. We just put that on the, on the applications, but I never worked that late. I'm, you know, I'm done by about 4:30. Once daylight savings hits, you know, I might knock till about 5:30, just because like you folks said, people are home at that time. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, except in the front end, you said normally late mor, we don't really, we don't care as long as you're not doing stuff late at night, so it sounds like it should be something more like, I don't know, 10:30 in the mor, late morning, right now you've got it as early afternoon. I'm just trying to figure out what time you really want.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm on my own, so I basically do whatever I need to do, so I'd like to say late morning, but I might have put on the application like 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. Usually I don't get out there until, until early afternoon. That is correct, sir.
So what would you like us to authorize you to do?
Yeah, because we need to just have a time.
You could do, if you could do like 11:00 a.m.
Sure. Okay. You got it.
That would be helpful.
And then, so no set Saturdays, if Saturdays work out, otherwise whatever, then you may come out, and that would be roughly the same time, mid-afternoon?
So actually, Saturday would be a little, so if you did like 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on a Saturday. Not gonna get out too early, and I'm not gonna stay out too late.
Okay. Pete, any questions?
And just to be, just to be fully transparent, I, I wasn't sure what somebody said, but I hadn't said, I am Boundless Energy, so we are solar. I don't know if somebody missed, missed up that before, but I just wanted to make that clear.
No, what we were doing is, we've had just a lot of solar as of late, so the other gentleman doing power remodeling, power home remodeling, just a different category than what we've been, been blessing.
I think it was Pete looking for.
And Foster, I was just amusing myself by saying that your company sounded like an exercise company to me, so I knew it was, I knew it was solar. My wife tells me not everybody thinks I'm as funny as I do, so. So you, do you do the work as well?
So we're actually owned by a company called Freedom Forever. Freedom Forever is the largest electrical solar installer in the country, and we are, we're actually owned by them. We're Boundless Energy ourselves, are a local company, our headquarters are based out of Marlboro, but all of our installs are done by Freedom Forever.
I'm fine, thank you.
The only question I had was on the hours, and we figured that out, so.
Yeah.
And Foster, if you heard the other one, so you've heard that we certainly recommend that you just reach out to the police, so they kind of know where you'll be canvassing for the day, just to get ahead of any phone calls that may come in. And if you see, please, no solicitors, from the bottom of our heart, don't knock on that door, because we end up hearing about it.
Yeah.
And that's honestly, by doing the 90 days, it allows us, if something's working out, great, you come back and renew your problem, no problem. Something's not working out, and that's our way to end it and not have to drag it out.
I've had a permit in town before with Trinity Solar.
Okay, okay, great. All right, are we good?
And just to clarify, you, you said you normally would only be working till 4:30. We're, we're authorizing you to go till 7:00 p.m., but what, similar to the last conversation, we'll say sundown or 7:00 p.m., whichever is easier, earlier, and it sounds like that doesn't really impinge too much on what you're doing.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And do you want to ask the same questions, Mark, about licensing and all that, or you good?
No, it, it related more to the home improvements on the other.
Okay, fair enough. All right, motion?
Comments?
Did you close?
I'm gonna, I was gonna coach her through this.
Okay, no, okay, so, so Matt, we'll call it close, close the hearing, and we'll move to motion?
I move that we approve the application to solicit from Boundless Energy for a 90-day period, renewable, at the end of that 90 days, to run Monday through Friday, where did I put this off? There we go, Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to sundown or 7:00 p.m., whichever is later, earlier, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you are good to go, Foster.
Thank you very much, guys, have a great night.
Same here, thank you.
Take care.
All right, moving right along. Jean Minio to request permission to use the front lawn for programs for the 2025 and 2026 season. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. So we're anticipating being under construction, and don't want to have any overlap between audience and vehicles or lawns being torn up or any of that, so we're looking for permission to move to the front. We hope construction might be done in the summer of '26, but we would still want to just be there, because then you get punchless and commission utilities and all the rest of it, it's gonna take a little while longer.
Questions?
You've worked this out with Trinity?
Yes.
Good, I'm fine then.
Jean, did you provide the diagrams? Were they in the package, or?
I don't know that they were in the package, I think.
They weren't in the package.
We, I thought, was expecting them today, we didn't get them today.
No, I, I thought I sent a map a day or two ago.
Oh, no, I didn't see anything, but.
Oh, do you happen to have it, Gus?
I didn't bring it with me, I would have if I'd known.
We've had an issue with people doing spam lately, so that's a possibility.
That's the only reason I'm asking, I think, I don't think you'll, I talked with Jean yesterday on this, saw the map, so I know it exists. It made sense what she was doing from my perspective, so I don't think there's anything controversial, but either we're gonna simply vote. It made sense what she was doing from my perspective, so I don't think there's anything controversial, but either we're going to simply vote in principle to approve this, and then you have to come back. Or we can approve, perhaps, if we can find the map, we could perhaps approve the configuration.
Coming right now.
Didn't we have this conversation like a year ago, where we, I think where you wanted to set up the stage, and where you wanted to have some trailers, and?
Yep.
So that has to take.
It's a different, well, I think.
We shifted because of Trinity's plans for where the infrastructure is. We want to steer clear of that.
Okay.
And Dan is even going to walk the property with me when it's not snow filled, and we'll make sure we avoid that before we bring anything on the property.
The idea would be that if Trinity's able to start the infrastructure work, this was intended to be set up in a way that would no way, shape, or form interfere with what they need to do.
Good. I mean, I agree, in principle. I mean, it's going to be a win-win, so.
Thank you.
There's anything that's, and I don't think there's anyone, Christine, anyone else is asking for the car show. I don't even know if it's going to be going on.
The, the car show, I've been working with him, and we can't guarantee that that work will be done in time for him to do that, so he was going to secure another location.
Okay.
Yeah.
There it is. There we go.
Okay.
There we go. Sorry about that.
So if the construction goes on, is that in theory going right through the heart of your? So then, so then you would just shift or not hold it during a particular couple of weeks so they can get that done?
Right.
No, I think this makes total sense.
But I have a question now.
We are not going to hold them up.
No, I don't, I get that.
We'll get out of their way.
I have a question. This one doesn't show the bar area.
You're right.
Is that because you're not going to sell your world-famous margaritas?
Oh, no.
Gus is asking for a friend.
Well, no, I thought it was going to be the food truck. That's all, I just kind of went along with that.
I did put that in after when we were doing.
Okay, well, so.
But basically, where that shadow is between the shipping containers and the info booth is where we intended to put the the tent for the bar, and thinking that it has the chain-link fence behind it, so.
So that was my one question of Jean, and I don't want the public to think it was only because I was trying to figure out where the bar was going to be. It was that it was because it was so close to the road. I basically said, gee, is that, is that the best place to put a bar? And then she pointed it out, well, actually, we're putting it backed up against the chain-link fence on the inside of the chain-link fence, so it's actually a good, it would be southeast of the info booth kind of thing.
Right.
And so I actually appreciated that she put that thought into it. But it's not because I just need to know where the margaritas are going to be. I was just looking at it from a public safety standpoint.
But it's nice to have that knowledge of nugget, a little nugget of knowledge.
It's good to know, yeah.
Those are fascinating.
Just raising the bar.
We could, we could kill two birds with one stone if the school would let you store your stuff in the buses in the summer when they're not using them.
Aren't the buses gone in the summer?
They're gone in the summer. All right, are we good? Any questions?
Are the specific dates, or is this a continuous thing?
We'd like to move in, sometime in April. Our first event this year is May 3rd.
So I guess the only issue is how are you handling the alcohol license?
Well, I'll come back for that, but I submitted our event forms to the police first to see if they had any concerns.
So you're, you're going to have a general permission to use it on, kind of generally, then when you have specific events that you're going to serve alcohol, you'll come in advance?
For those licenses, yes.
And then we'll have that calendar. I mean, right now, no one else.
Same as we did last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think throughout last year, anyone during the winter, during the summer came along and needed it, so it's not like there's any conflict with the property. So it's good.
All right, we'll go through October, similar, and similar expectations for '26 also.
I see you're renaming some of the streets. It says Surby Drive now instead of Service Drive.
It always has said that.
That'll be the name henceforth.
That's on the Google map, so.
How recently were they changed?
Always by that way.
All right, are we good? You have any questions?
I.
Okay.
I move that we approve Belle Forge's request to be allowed to use the front lawn for its summertime activities, starting at the beginning of your planned, planned events in May out through the end of October, subject to any changes to this map that need to be made either to accommodate Belle, accommodate Trinity's infrastructure work, or if anything, you know, you can always come back with a requested change to this map.
Okay, thank you.
Including the bar, if you have an updated map, I think.
I'll, I'll bring that one when I come for the permits.
Is there a need to do two years, or do we just do 25 for now and do 25?
Just 25.
Just do 20, okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, aye. All right.
Thank you.
Season 25, getting underway. All right, next up, we have Sarah Hanifin, Director of Council of Aging, to provide a quarterly update and request one-day liquor licenses for the following dates. March 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 to celebrate St. Patrick's Day, March 18th, 2025, Council on Aging, July 23rd, 2025, 5:00 to 7:00, Council on Aging Cookout, August 9th, excuse me, August 13th, 2025, 5:00 to 7:00, Council on Aging Cookout, and the last cookout would be September 17th, 2025, 5:00 to 7:00 for their cookout.
Correct.
All right.
Do I better clarify? You have to say March 18th instead of June 18th on the date.
Oh, sorry.
Paying attention.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just making sure you were paying attention. You're staying on your toes. All right, good evening.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Just provided you the dates for the cookouts. We're hoping to have those once again. Thank you for approving last year's. Just a brief update of what's happening down at the center. The board consists of five members. Bob Heald, he's the president, Annette Wells, Rose Tebow, Patty Byrne, and Roger O'Donnell. Staffing, we are fully staffed. And we're open most Saturdays unless otherwise noted. 2024 year-end stats. 1,567 people were served down at the center. They participated in different activities, different services. Our average daily attendance is currently approximately 80 people a day, which is really, it's fantastic. It's good. We held 1,011 events last year with a total of 23,617 duplicated events. Our 60-plus population in 2024 was 3,221 out of the 13,003 residents here in Medfield. So the 60-plus population's over 24%. We provided 954 services 1,672 times. We had 68 volunteers complete 1,502 volunteer opportunities. And our total number of new participants who signed up in 2024 is 213 people, which is a 15% increase from 2023. Lots of things here. In 2024, we partnered with LPI and saved a significant amount of money by spending less on toner and paper. Hopefully you guys have seen those newsletters. They look very clean. It's a 12-page newsletter, and we mail it over to 600 participants here in Medfield, as well as outside of Medfield. I'm a huge believer in volunteers. So it's important to continue to offer volunteer opportunities. In each month, we have volunteers come in and fold and label that newsletter. That was something that we were able to outsource with a fee, but keeping volunteers engaged is very important to me. We held six large day trips in 2024 with Bloom Tours. This year, I've coordinated with the Norfolk COA, and we are scheduled to have, oh my goodness. We needed nine with the Norfolk COA, sorry about that. We held four cookouts last year. This year, we collaborated with lots of different Medfield town departments. We have book clubs each month with the Medfield Public Library. We do evening events, evening presentations with the Medfield Public Library. We partnered with the water department to come in and do a one-to-one tabling event about the new water bills. A lot of the seniors had questions on how to read those bills, so that was nice. Medfield Outreach comes in every two weeks for bereavement groups or one-on-one group meetings. We have done senior safety tips with the Medfield Fire Department. We have also partnered with Medfield Fire Department in the DPW for sand for seniors. Coffee with a cop, coffee with a police officer on March 8th, and we've held our second annual Health and Wellness Fair.
A lot.
There's lots going on down there.
Pete?
How are the vans working out?
The van, that, that's a good question. So we have three vans, two of them which are newer. They are all in rotation each week. Hopefully you see them around town. Everything's running great with them.
The new one that is the smaller one seems to work okay?
Yes, the minivan, that is great. We use that for smaller pickups. If someone's going to a PT, or if there's only two people going food shopping, we'll take the small minivan. The 14-passenger we use for, for larger trips.
And and is your respite program fully filled at this point?
That is a great question as well. For the respite program, we currently have nine participants in the program. One has been out for multiple weeks. We have tours and trial days scheduled. The room, if you're familiar with the room, it's the last room on the left, so that room comfortably holds 10 participants. We also have two staff people as well as two different volunteers, so 10 is our good number. If I could rearrange the tables a little bit more, maybe get smaller tables, we could probably do 12, but I think 10 is where, where we feel most comfortable.
And, and what hours does the respite run for?
The respite program is Tuesdays and Thursdays from 11:30 to 3:00.
Have you had any thoughts about expanding the number of hours per week that you would offer it? Would there be demand, you think? It's such a good program.
It is. It's a lovely program.
To help people, let our caregivers have a respite from caregiving, basically.
Absolutely, give them a well-deserved break. We have thought about that. We've talked about it. As far as staffing, the staff that currently work it, it's not something that they would be able to do at this time. And if you haven't met the staff that work that program, they're lovely, and I would absolutely want to do everything within my power to, you know, keep them forever.
Is, is the facility available for residents that want to rent it to have an event?
That's a great question as well. Yes, so we have a building use agreement form, so if someone was to come in and want to use our space, they would come to the reception desk, they would get this form. They would fill it out, they would return it, and then at the next board meeting, which is typically always the first Wednesday of the month at 9:30, the board goes and approves those.
So if you want to rent it, you have to plan ahead a month or so to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's fees, it's, it's, it's a really great application. It answers all the questions. It, it shows the time of the space, the days that the space can be used, which rooms are off limits, and the fee as well, so.
There aren't a lot of spaces in town for rentals, so it could be a good opportunity for you guys to make some money.
Absolutely. The one thing that you need to keep in mind is we don't have a janitor, so that falls on COA staff or board members to, you know, clean up, be there while they're using the space. And currently, Park and Rec, they're using our space at least twice a week right now for, for programs. So we try to be fair, and we try to let people use the building when we can, but as far as renting it, we just don't really have the manpower for that.
Okay. Have you thought about maybe finding a contract person that could be the janitor and just clean up whenever, have somebody come in special just whenever there was an event? I know somebody that cleans my office that lives on Adam Street, so.
We have custodial services at the building. I don't want anybody to think we don't have.
Oh, right, they come in twice a week, right.
We do have custodial services at the building.
Right.
But your custodial services don't want to do the special rentals?
I don't think that's any, something that we've, I know that's not something that I've personally looked at since I've been in this role. It's, it's definitely something that I would be happy to look at and see if that's, you know, a possibility. We do get a lot of phone calls, a lot, to hold different events down at the COA, so.
Well, you could, you could make some more money for your programs, so I would encourage you to think about it.
Thank you.
Those are all the questions I have. I see it once a month when I go for my office hours there, and it's, it's always very busy, so it's nice to see that there's a lot of demand for what you're providing. People seem to like it, too, so that's great.
Absolutely. I always say there's something for everyone. It's just the hardest part is getting people to walk through the door. You know, and once they're in the door, I'll meet with them, I'll give them a tour of the facility, I will show them the newsletter, and then most of the time, they come back, so.
That reminds me, sir, of when I was a, more of a runner, and I always used to say the hardest part of the run was getting out the door. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Just as an aside, several years ago, when my mother was, I grew up in Seacock, and when you're, when you have parents that are older and it looks like they could use help, you fully, especially with the first one, although probably in my case, it was both, well, it was, it was the second one, because my mother took care of my father, but you feel totally unprepared how to help your parents. And I thought it was wonderful when I went into the, the Council on Aging in Seacock, and what that was, was an office, and they gave me some brochures, and I really appreciated what they did. But what we do here in this town is like, I was grateful for what I was getting in my old hometown. This is like a couple orders of magnitude different, and I'm glad that we do it, and I'm glad you do such a great job.
Thank you.
Pete didn't ask one question. I just figured he was going to ask. How are we, how are we doing on the garage?
Ah, the garage. That's a great question. The garage is coming along. I know that we have a call coming up next week, I think it is. Where, right now, we're just waiting on more approval, right?
Sarah's being very kind. We pulled everybody off of, who was working on the garage project, to work on the FAF Center to try and figure out the modular, so we've had a little slowdown just because it's been all hands on deck to try and get summer camp this summer. So I appreciate the kindness, Sarah. We will get back on it very shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Glad I asked that question. And I was curious about one thing. You said, I think, what, 224 new members in 2024? I was just curious whether that's.
113.
I know that in COVID, the COA took a big dive because nobody could do anything.
Right.
And then it seemed like, I think in 2022, it started to come back. There were some limited things, and I thought 2023 was still probably below where it had been previously.
Rebuilding, yeah.
I've, soon, we've completely gotten through the COVID trough.
I would say absolutely. I think our numbers are back where they used to be prior to COVID. I also think that the new development to the left of the center has helped. Lots of different people come in. Again, once they walk the building, see what's happening, they're in there, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And then, is there, I'm just curious whether 224, you may not know the answer to this, is 224 or thereabouts? Is that sort of the historic? I'm trying to figure out whether this is the demographics of people getting older in about 224 a year show up, or is it, is there kind of a trend or anything?
That's a great question as well. This is something that I was going to read, but I just felt like my mouth was getting a little dry. I felt like I was talking too much, so I, I didn't share, but I will. The U.S. Census Bureau estimates that more than 25% of the mass population will be 60 and older by the year 2030, an increase of 33% from 2012. So absolutely, the population.
Oh, no, I was just curious about, in particular, did you see the, of the 224 that showed up, is that just sort of the demographic flow, or is it that suddenly people, there's a, you know, different interest or heightened interest in the COA? Does it, is there anything in that trend for 2024 for the COA that was of interest?
Yeah, I would say that there's a lot more new programs, more people are moving into town, hearing about different things that we offer. It's funny, on every Tuesday, 9:30, we have a yoga class, and there's a car full from Norfolk that come over, and they just like our yoga program. So, yeah, I think it's just a little bit of both.
Well, that's one of my questions, because I do have a friend whose mom lives in Dover, but she, and I can't remember the phrase that she used when they, when they hop from senior center to senior center. What's that?
Reciprocal.
No, 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 but it's actually like a, like a, like a.
Senior center hopping is what they call it.
Roberta had a slang for it, but when she said it, I was like, oh, that's a funny name.
That's a funny name.
I can't think of it off the top of my head. But so do you get, so you just answered one of my questions. So you have a group from Norfolk that sees you have a program that, that, that they're enjoying.
Right, yeah.
Are you seeing other programs that are drawing people from other towns?
Absolutely. Let's see. That's another section that I wrote down, but I didn't share on.
I think it's great, because like both of these gentlemen have commented, like, we have a really great senior center, and you're, everyone there is just so friendly and warm, and, I mean. you're, everyone there is just so friendly and warm and, I mean, I saw you when I broke my ankle and I went in and like they had a, a, one of those little wheel carts that I could put my knee on that I used for a couple of weeks, so I didn't have to always hop around in crutches. But that's some of like the hidden gems that people are not aware that, like I, somebody said, you should call the Council on Aging. They might have something you can borrow for a couple of weeks and it was phenomenal.
Yep, we have a nice shed full of slightly used medical equipment. That is for residents of Medfield, so, yeah, we loan things out all the time. Let's see, mahjong lessons is a new popular thing right now, so we have people coming in from different towns for that.
Great.
Let's see, we're doing monthly audiology screenings. That's new as of last January. We have tech support from Montrose. The students come in every Wednesday evening, so yeah, there's definitely a lot of new things that I think are drawing people in.
And has Nova made an appearance?
Yes. We love Nova. Trying to get creative, tell, you know, have Fosse maybe come up with an idea to do something for, for Nova.
And then are you having any issues with parking? And the reason I ask that is I know, you know, the Kingsbury Club has had some challenges over the last few weeks with just overflow parking and they're ending up in the circle and, so any issues there or all good?
No, I think our parking has been fine. If we have a large event or a busy day, typically Wednesdays and Fridays are our busiest days. But I haven't seen any parking outside of our lot. The DPW has done a fantastic job, you know, keeping the snow so we can have as many spots as possible. Yeah, so parking right now has, has been okay. When it's election time, not so much.
Well, yeah. And then speaking of the Kingsbury Club, do you have a partnership with them? Do they offer any programs for swimming and things?
Yes, they are really good, good neighbors to us. They offer the seniors, as long as they're a member of the center, every Monday, Tuesday and Friday from, I want to say it's ten to eleven, they can go to Kingsbury Club and participate in the swim.
Oh, that's fantastic.
For five dollars. So they pay them over there. Yeah, it's great. They come in, they, they check in at the center and then go over to Kingsbury.
And is there anything that they do, the, the Ice House Restaurant? Have you, have you done anything?
We haven't done anything.
That's a phenomenal restaurant. That's a nice setup and they're super flexible. I'm a Wednesday night regular after my pickleball, so I can speak from experience there. And then the, the, the one thing I saw that I know was a big hit and you didn't comment was the shredding truck.
Oh, yep, that was on here too. Townwide shredding event in October was a huge success this year. I'll have to toot my own little horn a little bit here. I think I promoted that event very well. We had it in the Patch, we had it in the Insider, we had posters hanging around, we shared at the library. So a lot of residents in Medfield took advantage of that. It was wonderful.
So you'll do that again at some point?
Absolutely, and it's gonna be bigger and better next year.
All right, all right, I love that. I think, and then I'm just curious, you made a comment about folks coming in and, and helping the seniors. I've seen this winter with the gas bill, just the gas, if you have natural gas, it's brutal. Everything working out okay? The seniors coming in, any issues there? Anything we need to be sensitive to?
Not yet, but I, I'm hearing that we might hear some concerns about the bills being a lot more than what was expected. Fuel assistance, my understanding is that they're not getting as much as they have in the past. So that's definitely something that we have our eyes and ears on.
Okay. All right, I think I've gone through my list. I just, you, you do such a phenomenal job and I love hearing when friends of mine that, who, you know, their parents live in Framingham or Sherburne or, or Milis and like, oh, we go to the Medfield Senior Center, the Council on Aging.
Well, we're definitely a welcome, welcoming building, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Yeah, absolutely.
I would just add another comment. For anybody that has a, a, an older person in their family who is transitioning in some way, reach out to the Council on Aging because they are experts at how to, what, what's available and, and how to do it. So think of them as a resource for replacements or for whatever.
Those ladies are so nice. Oh my goodness. I, I end up seeing some of the state hospital walking the dogs after their day and that's, that's, that's a hidden gem that, to your point, Pete, about, you know, people are transitioning. If anyone has a parent that, you know, they, they, they needed assistance during the day and, well, their husband and wife just wants to get four hours to go run their errands and whatever. Just all the crafts and everything that they do and it's, 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 I think you're, you're having a side entrance put in so that they can go right to that room and not have to go through the.
To go around the back.
Yeah.
In the summer and the spring, they spend a lot of time outside in the patio. So yes, we are, that's something that's happening soon.
Great.
Yeah.
I would just add that I've noticed that your asphalt is deteriorating and is gonna need some attention soon, unfortunately. I don't know when it's best to do that in terms of extending the life of it, but it's certainly one of those things that if there's, if there are things that we can do now as opposed to waiting until it's really bad.
The pothole and I reached out to DPW and they were there later on that day and they filled it, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I'm sure Mo and Rob Quinn from the Facilities Department have already been discussing it, so.
Sure, yeah. They're great.
So we just need to vote on the, the dates of March nineteenth, June eighteenth, July twenty-third, August thirteenth and September seventeenth. All of those are five to seven at night, so.
I move that we approve the COA request for one day liquor licenses, so are the dates and times called out by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Sarah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, no discussion items, so we will jump to twenty twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. Christine, you can review for us kind of the FY twenty twenty-six budget with capitalization stabilization, non-building projects, municipal building capital stabilization fund, and the lovely topic of health insurance.
So Frank is actually, the Capital Budget Committee is his committee that he staffs, so he's actually going to make the presentation on capital and municipal building.
So prior to the meeting, we handed out these spreadsheets, telling all the capital appropriations proposed for reagents for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So we will start with the non-building's projects. And I should mention that these have all been reviewed and approved by the Capital Budget Committee and reviewed by the Warrant Committee as well.
We have one more meeting, right? Like the end of, do we have one more capital?
Yes. So at that meeting, we'll still do water and sewer and then any other sort of one-off things that have come up since January. Was that our last meeting? Mid-January?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So in terms of non-building projects, we have sixty-six thousand dollars proposed for a new line cruiser at the Police Department. We're pretty much in the, the schedule of replacing one a year. And if you look in the out years of the five-year plan, that, that holds up. It's sixty-six thousand dollars for fiscal twenty-six. The chief has that for the out years as well until twenty-nine, when who knows what pricing will be like by for the Fire Department in fiscal year twenty twenty.
Frank, before you leave the cruiser, did, did the police consider it all an electric vehicle?
I know the chief has looked at it and right now I'm not sure the technology is there. But we do have the, the, the new vehicle policy. That name is escaping my mind.
We, the, we don't have the infrastructure at the Police Department in order to do that right now. So that needs to be the investment first.
Build a charger, in other words.
Yeah, and then the location of that is something that we need to work on.
Just as a point, when we passed that policy, one important part of it was that we need to look at the cost effectiveness of doing it, not just.
Correct.
For the Fire Department, we have the annual lease payment for the replacement of engine three. The last payment on that lease is in fiscal year thirty. It's a flat amount, forty-eight thousand ninety-five dollars. Another item for the Fire Department is structural fire gear, so that, all that stuff has a useful life of around ten years. The chief has identified a number of those sets that need to be replaced. So that's thirty thousand dollars right there to come out of the capital stabilization fund.
Frank, do you know if the firefighting equipment still has the PFAS on it? Is there any other choice other than to have PFAS?
Right now, the only ones that we've been able to, to get are the ones with PFAS.
Thank you.
Another item out of the Fire Department, a new ambulance to replace our two thousand seventeen vehicle. The pricing that we have right now is for four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That will come out of the ambulance mileage revolving account and the ALS revolving account. So there's no impact on the tax levy or the capital stabilization fund for that. There's just been a lot more wear and tear on the vehicles. We're doing more mutual aid. Funny enough, I feel like we've been talking about Norwood Hospital a lot, but with Norwood Hospital being out of service, the ambulance has to travel further, more frequently, so there's added mileage on the vehicles.
I was just gonna ask how, if you knew how many miles were on that eight-year-old ambulance that they're replacing.
I don't know the exact mileage.
Probably a ton.
Follow up with the chief.
Idle curiosity.
For IT, the Capital Budget Committee spent a lot of time reviewing IT expenditures for the past few years in making sure that they were comfortable with the three hundred thousand dollar amount for schools and fifty thousand dollar amount for town departments. Specific for the town departments, we have fifty thousand dollars proposed for fiscal year twenty-six. Most of that will be going towards a phone system replacement for the Town Hall and Medfield Outreach. The existing town phone system is about fifteen years old. It's moving from something called the PRI to a SIP truck, which Owen had to explain to me many times what that actually means. But when you actually pick up the phone, if, God forbid, there was an emergency, if we called the police station and right now it would just say Town Hall. And with this new upgraded system, it would say Town Hall Room One or Town Hall Third Floor Quarter Office, something like that. There are other benefits to having it, but as soon as we talked about the public safety implications, it was clear it was and just on top of the system being fifteen years old. Okay, so moving on to the medical, medicom and tennis courts resurfacing. So this was a project that first came up last year after the Parks and Rec Commission got the new lights with the assistance of a state earmark and funding from the town as well as the Parks and Rec Revolving Fund. The condition of the courts came to light, excuse the pun, didn't plan that one. So this one has a little bit of a Frankenstein approach of funding sources. So we'll be taking a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from Parks and Rec. That will basically be a combination of prior year's articles as well as new spending from that fund and then fifty thousand dollars from the assessors overlay account. Two or three weeks ago, the assessors released a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from their overlay reserve. That money is not appropriated. It goes to free cash. So knowing that this project was a priority, we, like I said, we came up with a little bit of a Frankenstein approach. The total project cost of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The Facilities Department needs a new tractor for snow removal at the, at the, for the school grounds. They got their money's worth with the last one that was tractor that they had was from nineteen seventy-five. So we'll be getting, we're proposed to have a new one purchased for fifty-five thousand dollars.
It's amazing how long they get, how many years they get out of those vehicles.
Yeah. Public Works has two vehicles on here, a backhoe and a dump truck. The backhoe for a hundred and seventy-five thousand and the dump truck for, I'm gonna say a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-seven, excuse me. Both of those are not only used for highway projects, but also for snow removal operations as well. Chapter ninety is on here.
Frank, is that a hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Yes. Oh, sorry, that one's on the next page. I apologize. I skipped ahead.
You come back to four hundred and twelve.
Yeah. The four hundred and twelve thousand is actually out of chapter ninety, which isn't appropriated by Town Meeting. That's funds that are available to us via the state. But we do include it in the capital plan just to provide context for all the improvements that DPW makes. At the bottom of the, the chart there, you'll see the hundred and eighty-five thousand that comes out of the capital stabilization fund that complements our chapter ninety allocation from the state. So in addition to the chapter ninety that DPW uses for roadway improvements, they have this hundred and eighty-five available to them as well. We include that in all years of the five-year plan.
I have one, this is probably the time to ask this question. It feels like it's a question I should know, but it's partly because I know what the budget used to be, that's why I have a question. The, the Warrant Committee's presentation on the fixed, the fixed cost items, health insurance and all those things, I understood all that. There was, how did, it indicated that then whatever else is part of revenue then gets allocated between the town and schools. But to the extent that money that's revenue to the town is going into capital, how does that get managed relative to the town and school? It seems like that should, we, we used to have the capital stuff pulled out as well.
So we have, so capital's completely separated into the capital stabilization fund that we've been funding with free cash. Municipal Building Stabilization Fund is also independent and has been funded with the override from twenty eighteen. We keep those completely separate as revenue. And then we fund those projects. We don't fund them on a seventy-five, twenty-five split. We fund them on the.
Basically a revenue pool that's not part of the Warrant Committee's revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
Treat them completely separately and, and they're awarded based on, from the committee based on, on the needs versus.
That was my point. I was trying to figure out how does that get allocated, because Owen saw.
Yeah.
I only saw the fixed cost, but I understand that, okay.
Prior to creating the capital stabilization fund, the capital budget was considered one of the revenue sources, but we've since moved it out.
Okay.
With the new process.
Thanks.
So for fiscal twenty-six, all in all, for non-building projects, we estimate as of right now one million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand to be taken out of the capital stabilization fund. In addition, we anticipate closing a number of articles appropriated in prior years to close back into the capital stabilization fund because we spent ARPA funds on, on certain capital items as opposed to spending our, quote-unquote, our own money on, on capital items. So right now we estimate that'll be five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of articles and funding that will close back into the fund and available for appropriation. So we estimate after capital spending is completed for fiscal twenty-six, there will be one point two million dollars roughly available for for next year's fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-seven, I should say, capital plan.
Against that two point two million.
Basically, there's a million that's coming from outside sources.
Okay.
About half of that, almost half of that is the.
Yeah, and then you got the chapter.
Any questions on those?
Were there?
Is there anything that the, the committee turned down that you'd say, ah, we did it for financial reasons, but there was, you know, it's like, we should have funded it this year. We're gonna have to try to fund it next year. What's on the margin?
Well, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there were a number of projects that were put on hold once the FAF Center was closed. And basically what happened was the Capital Budget Committee and the Parks and Rec Commission regrouped and decided instead of asking for a few of the things that they were initially planning on for fiscal twenty-six, why don't we put that money towards the modular and the medicom.
So that was mostly Parks and Rec type stuff that would have otherwise been funded.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
So on to the municipal buildings projects. Rob Quinn, our new facilities director, who I think on his sixth or seventh day of the job is when the FAF Center issue first came up. So he's been very, very busy along with Ben and Shane and Wayne on the facility side. Putting together a five, excuse me, putting together a funding plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. I think he's put it best this year. I think he looks at it as somewhat of a bridge year while we're waiting for the full results of that Arrow Street report that's taking a look at all, all of the town and school buildings. So this is the, these are the projects that he has come up with for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. I'm happy to walk through them individually. I'm happy to take questions. I'm more happy to walk through just, just the town projects. There are a bunch of them, so I don't know how you want to approach these. I guess just to hit some of the, the high points on the town side, there is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars listed for the modular to be located nearby the Hinckley Pond. I will note that sixty-five thousand of that would come from this fund. Then you'll see towards the bottom that there's a hundred thousand dollars to come out of the assessors overlay that was released. So not the, the full funded amount would not come out of, of the municipal building stabilization fund. We would receive, we would, excuse me, utilize some of that overlay reserve to, to fund that. Like I said a few minutes ago, that money's not used. It just goes to free cash. Some of the ones that are a bit different than years past, you'll see a lean-to design at DPW. So this is to design a new, basically a new storage structure at the DPW for some of the equipment that doesn't necessarily need to be temperature controlled, but just shielded from the elements. So we've had a few questions about what that is, just to get, get ahead of that one.
Is that at the garage?
Yes. So that would actually be on the side of the, it would be on the side of the salt shed. Which is coincidentally also due to be painted this year. We've level funded the emergency repair funding. That amount seems to be, seems to be working out as of now. But like I said, happy to take any questions about any of the specifics on here.
There was the emergency repair.
That's at the very end here. Town and schools, 175, okay.
And and the emergency repair funding, is that is that just money that we're escoring or is that there's a particular thing that we're doing with it?
So every year we set aside, I think it's been every year, I don't know if the if the amount has changed, but at least since I've been here, the amount's been $175,000. That's appropriated every year in case.
Just in case.
Goes up.
Yeah.
And then when that fiscal year ends, any money that hasn't been used flows right back into the fund.
It's expensive to run a town.
And so just as with the capital or the non-building projects, we do a forecast of what's slated to be taken out of the fund and where that sort of leaves us in future fiscal years. So right now, we have a little bit north of 1.5 million slated to come out of the fund if approved by town meeting. That would leave us with a little bit more than 315,000. If the two and a half percent increase is approved by the select board, as it was, I guess, two meetings ago, maybe this most recent meeting that we did for fiscal year 26. If that increase occurs again, next year, we'd be looking at about one and a half million dollars back in the fund to appropriate for fiscal year 2027.
We skipped over schools, but seeing Kathy, no, seeing Kathy's here. I see 100,000 for if the high school for Medfield outreach workers. I mean, you're getting better digs, sir.
Well, one of the things we understand the difficulty of space.
No, they can't. You gotta.
Grab the mic. Thanks, Kathy.
Hi, we understand that space is a rarity right now for Medfield. So we're looking to just maximize the usage of our space that we currently have. If you've been into the Medfield youth outreach or what used to be youth outreach offices, what you'll know is there are some open space in the back and really to do the work, the bulk of the work we do, which is confidential and HIPAA protected, we really need individual offices that have closing doors, drop ceilings, confidential space. So understanding that getting a new space is years in the making, we're looking to modify the space that we currently have and maximize the usage. And as you know, we maximize our use of graduate interns as well to help expand our services at no cost to the town. So this is a way to give them space to practice confidentially as well as allow some of our human service staff to rotate in our office to for some of the services are more user friendly out of our office as we overlap with populations. Yeah, thank you.
Gus, just to go back to the schools really, really quick. Rob would be very upset if he found out that I skipped over the roof replacement cost that he had highlighted on here. So you'll see for each of the school projects in the sort of 2026 column, the totals are zero, but he just when he presented to the warrant committee last week, he just wanted to put everyone's on everyone's radar, the cost of those those roof replacements with projects in 2024. I think the last project, or excuse me, the last estimate that we had was from 2017. So he's gotten updated estimates on the cost of those replacements for each of the schools.
So I'm not caught off guard down the road.
So that's 6.6 million roof replacement estimate, and they're just phenomenally expensive roofs. How many, do we know how many more years the roof is good for at the high school?
I don't. I don't know.
At the high school? Oh, probably, I think it was done about 10 years ago. Yeah, yeah, they're on they're on their last, they're 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 over 35 years old. They've they've reached their useful life. They need to be replaced. It was always the intention to replace them through the accelerated roof repair. If the school had passed in 2021, we would have immediately entered into accelerated roof repair to start those projects. The school didn't pass, and then because some of the other school districts were over and above their costs due to COVID, supply issues, accelerated roof repair went away. It is now back now, so it is our intention to move forward with that as soon as we can.
Can you tell me what that is? I don't know about.
MSBA offers an accelerated roof repair grant program to towns.
Okay. What percentage do they tend to fund? Is it like?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Thirty percent or something?
I wouldn't want to quote you something off the top of my head.
Because the numbers are big. The high school is 6.6 million, the middle school is 5.5. Three lock is three.
When the high school and the middle school reconstructed 20 years, 20 plus years ago, the roofs were not replaced at that time. So we've had some some patch issues. We've had some leaks we've had to fix through the insurance company, so they're, they need to be replaced.
All right. Any questions? Everybody's good?
Health insurance update?
Yes, so I alluded to this last week, and then I sent you a presentation that we had made at the warrant committee last week. We had anticipated our budget for health insurance this year to be a 10% increase. And that guidance had been given to us by Maya, who's our insurance company. We were notified last week, the actual increase would be 16.92%, which is significantly more than we had budgeted and impacts the guidance that the warrant committee gave because obviously, as we just discussed a few minutes ago, health insurance is a is a fixed slash shared cost between a town and schools and does affect the revenue that's available. So that revenue amount was just reduced at the last warrant committee meeting. The chair will be sending out a letter with that new guidance, but the school committee is aware of it. They were at the meeting. I'm aware of it. The schools currently have to reduce about $310,000 in their budget. And we have about $25,000 after that reduction. So we're all working hard and we believe we can meet that. It's just gonna take us a little bit of time to get there. We are working with the insurance company. As you know, we had met with the PEC and we had a three-year agreement in place. We made significant plan design changes last year. We introduced a deductible plan that matches the benchmark plan at the GIC. And unfortunately, as you're seeing it all over, most towns are feeling this regardless of their insurance company. There's a private business in town that reached out to me just last week that had watched the warrant committee and said, not that I want to be in the same boat as everybody else, but their insurance for their company went over 20%. And they have employee, about 45 employees. So it's not just what we're seeing in the in the municipal sector, but the private sector as well. We are looking to meet, I have a meeting with the teachers' union next week to start discussing with them what we can do to address this. So I'll keep you, I'll keep you updated, but we are working to get our budgets down to the warrant committee guidance.
Christine, there was one, there's one slide in here that was had the by-town comparisons.
Yes, we have some more updates from those that have been coming in this week.
I couldn't help but notice certain towns like Medway and I think others.
Yes.
Self-insured. I I'm not thinking, why don't we do that? I'm just saying.
Well, because we used to. So I actually, as soon as Medway announced that they had a 4.7, which as he points out, it does was double what they had budgeted. Medway's in a small self-insured group. They've had tremendous, I don't know, successes. They haven't had any large cases. They haven't had any losses. So they are able to keep their premiums down. They also made a significant investment in their reserves during COVID. So they are able to essentially buy down those rates using some of their reserves to get to the 4.7. One of the ones that's been talked about recently, I believe they just had their vote last week, is the West Suburban Health Group. Holliston was actually asked to leave what the West Suburban Health Group, based on their experience, they are actually going to the GIC. West Suburban anticipates they'll be able to use the money that Holliston has left in the trust to bring their rates down as well. So when you see that announcement in the paper, they're thinking about a four to 5% increase, which is significantly lower. But those little one-offs seem to have more of an anecdote with them rather than the trend we're seeing. A few of them that have been coming in this week are all in the in the 14 and 15% range.
Thank you. Not your fault. You're the messenger. I'm the messenger, but.
You just get re-elected to the.
I just get re-elected to the. Yes. But one of the things that I, you know, I talked when I met with the the teachers rep last week is this is a shared cost for the town. So it's a benefit for the town to keep the cost down for the employees. And it's also a benefit for us to provide good health insurance coverage because we have a recruitment and retention problem that we've been fighting for about five or six years now. You know, I'm not lost on that we're just issuing our class and comp, you know, after working on this for the last two years. Dr. Marsen's in negotiations. We just wrapped up fire negotiations. We're in police negotiations and we have to come to the table and say, and now we have a 16.9% increase in your health insurance, so.
And I think what we've just said is, in the private sector, it's happening too. So this isn't any sector being called out. This is like, you know, if anyone's looking at their 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 annual program, I don't know anyone that went down, right?
So. No, and there's there's some national reasons for that. There's some reasons that specific to Massachusetts and then specific to municipalities. So we're seeing it across the across the board. Currently, our rates, when you compare Medfield's benchmark plan to the GIC benchmark plan, we're still lower in rates. So, you know, initially, when we got this, everybody's initial reaction was, oh, we need to go to the GIC. But we looked at the rates and it wouldn't save us any money at this time. The GIC doesn't release their rates till the end of February, so we'll have a better idea than if that's something that the PEC would like us to.
For anyone listening, GIC, what does stand for?
That's the Massachusetts Group Insurance Commission.
Okay.
And PEC?
Is the Public Employment Committee.
Medfield's Public Employment Committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. And that is the group that we bargained with as a whole to do the plan design changes last year.
They represented all the unions at once?
Each union has a representative on the committee and it's weighted based on the population of the union. So for us, the teachers and the police are the largest unions on the weighted vote for that scale. Unfortunately, and I, again, I'm not, I didn't write the, I didn't write the law and I'm the messenger, but it does bother me that we don't have any non-union representations and they are not allowed on the PEC for those negotiations because they are not in a union. And it just really frustrates me greatly. We did invite non-union representatives to come to those meetings. They couldn't vote, but they could at least be at the meeting if they wanted to at least hear what we were talking about.
And a lot of DPWs are unionized and.
Correct.
Town halls are, are they?
They are as well. Town halls are. We're one of the few that that has just police and fire on the on the town side.
All right. Next up, review town meeting warrant article.
So you have an updated list in front of you this evening? We have a few that have dropped off. I just wanted to check. You and I haven't had a chance to connect on the inclusionary zoning, so that's.
I need to reach out to Sarah. I've I've caught a little bit of what they're doing, so.
Okay.
I want my point in adding it was originally to get an issue on the table around inclusionary zoning. And and the reason that I even started thinking about this is that when the state came out with the MBTA communities law, they specifically said, no, 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 we're not interested in capital A affordable 40B anymore. We want small A affordable, which is what I've been interested in for years. And the the issue is, the only way you can put up housing that kind of fits into this category is 40B affordable. It's set up in a way that the subsidized units are paid for by the non-subsidized units, which would probably be the people who are looking for small A affordable units, except that the price for them is going to be incrementally higher because they're subsidizing the capital A affordable. And so I'm not trying to overthrow the entire 40B. But the idea that we are on track to overachieve on 40B suggested to me it made sense not to have a high inclusionary zoning requirement. You want to stay ahead of the 10% without a doubt, but it doesn't have to be for the for larger developments, doesn't have to be as high as you've got it set. Or at least I want to ask that question. You don't have, it wouldn't affect the state hospital property because that's already, they're already going down that path. Plus, because they're they're rental, it's an apartment complex, it's rental, you can't get the full 100% credit unless it's 25% 40B affordable. So I'm not, I'm not trying to throw the, even though we'd be overachieving, I'm not trying to throw 334 units off of our list. But if we had another one of those that maybe people would look at it a little differently, or a smaller one, not quite that extreme.
Let me ask a question on that train of thought. So so I know right now, when Trinity, knock on wood, we get on that path, they are committed to have rental properties for seven years. After seven years, they could change that that model and they could put them up for for sale in a condo complex. In that scenario, do we still keep the affordable portion of that?
I don't, I don't, I'd have to talk to them to find out what their business model is. They're not.
The zoning district addressed to.
That's why I'm asking that, is we talk about inclusionary, I'd like to keep that as, people keep saying, oh, I'd love the state hospital, but I'd rather have it as a condo than rental. And if we go down the path of seven years, I want to make sure that we get ahead of somebody should choose to convert that. We don't lose everything we just.
Yeah, I I'm not sure. I don't, I'm not an expert, but I actually think when stuff comes off as true affordable, you lose it.
Really?
Why wouldn't you? Because otherwise, after seven years.
Depends on the underlying zone.
Yeah, it's my understanding that is that is not their plan, but when they, when Trinity comes in to give their next update, it's a good question to ask.
I walked with Jim and he said, Eileen, I've never done it, but I'm not saying we wouldn't. So it's just, it's it's just not their current business model.
If the housing were built because of 40B, then as long as the underlying zoning doesn't permit the use, they have to stay affordable. If on the other hand, the zoning permits it, then you can end up losing a project or units out of the 40B designation.
And I'm just trying to get ahead of, we we talk now like, you know, we're we're golden, you know, if state hospital opens, we're golden. But we only golden for seven years and then we open up Pandora's box, potentially.
With it, with it, if they could convert, which I'm guessing they probably could, then that would be, as opposed to, say, Chapel Hill Landing, which is already ownership and it already has restricted restrictions on the units.
The ZBA, the ZBA in those cases made affordability in perpetuity.
Okay.
Trinity is not going as the ZBA. It's part of the rezone and the whole redevelopment project, so probably contractual between the town and Trinity or the like.
Do you know it?
We should have, if we just have it on the books, is seven years from now, if things change, let's not get behind the eight ball.
You know what the?
Let's get him closer.
Well, but I mean, but it's one of those things like.
You know what the town street project would be?
Oh, we should have. We didn't even think of it.
So two points. One, I think it's five years instead of seven years.
So we got two conversations. The question I asked was whether Mark knew what the pound street project would be because at some point in in that agreement, there was an ending point.
That's being proposed as a 40B project with an outside developer.
Right.
It's going to the ZBA, so I assume it will be subject to the in perpetuity requirement. And then it becomes a question, as you kind of alluded to, rental 25%, you get 100% credit. The condo, you only get essentially the 25%.
Right, right. Okay.
So the two points that I was gonna make is, I think it's instead of seven years, I think it's five years. And I think it's related to the historic tax credits. Gene's telling me that I'm right. And I know that I angsted about it coming off of the rental and and becoming condos, and I finally decided that the town would benefit from that because the the tax revenue would go up dramatically because condos are just so much more valuable than apartments. And all of a sudden, the the value of the whole project would go up by a third or a half or something, and and the property taxes would increase.
But would you want to see all of a sudden see our water table? Like, I mean, that's what got us into the 40B situation we're in now is as Medfield Village and all of that got built, we never got ahead of it. And that's why I know the planning board back in, I want to say, 2016, 2017 was like timeout. Every time somebody builds, that line's gonna stay the same. And so I just look at it, whatever's happening to state hospital, I'm great with that. But if they should convert it, let's make sure X quantity of those units get converted to affordable so that water line doesn't drop like a rock and then we're screwed.
And I've I've been saying this for years and I think among my colleagues, I'm not the only one. There's nothing etched in stone about 10%. If the state decides in their wisdom, they can raise it to 15 or whatever. So you need to have a cushion.
And that's why we keep saying to the residents, oh, you know, once, once this, once Trinity gets, we're locked and loaded, we're not to worry. Well, if it's five years, seven years, I thought, I thought Jim had told me seven. I, that's where I got that number from when I walked the grounds with him. Is that that's, that's not even a decade, so that's, I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a hole.
I think that comes from the historic tax credits, actually.
Yeah. Oh, it does. That's why you said he, they can't flip them that quick because they're taking money from the historic tax credits.
I was talking to Maria De La Fuente this week and I was asking her how far we are at this point from Safe Harbor and she said 25 units, she thought.
It's close. It's close.
Thought it was closer than that a few years ago.
I thought it was closer than that too.
Because we have the new census numbers, that's why it got changed.
Well, I thought it was like 16 after the new census numbers, but she said 25 to me. And the other thing is, you know, it's the, the total number of resident, of dwelling units, quote unquote. So you can actually, and that's, that was our criticism, again, my colleagues, of the MBTA communities when they weren't allowing any affordability. You dilute your denominator. So that if, if you're a community that got to 10% and suddenly you hit with a community, MBTA Communities project, you could, you could hypothetically drop below the 10%.
You just said, you just said something that I hadn't even thought about, dwelling units. They just approved accessory dwelling units in their new housing, so if it's dwelling units.
They are now calling those, I just had this discussion with Maria a couple hours ago. They are absolutely taking the position that they're going to count as dwelling units on the denominator, not affordable, but dwelling units.
Which, which both, which pushes the 40B limit, even if it doesn't change up significantly potentially.
The accessory dwelling thing is just so, from a policy standpoint.
Great.
I heard the governor say this week that we needed 225,000 new dwellings in Massachusetts.
Right. So on the warrant, I will give some, I had a one-on-one with the chair of the Conservation Commission and we actually talked about the water conservation private well restrictions. Just to bring her up to speed as to how I wrapped things up when I walked away from the town meeting in 2023. And before I met with her, I actually watched YouTube just to make sure I quoted myself correctly and I had said that we may bring it back, but it would depend on conversations. I did reach out to residents that had wells and my, as I said to the chair, you know, that summer may have been an anomaly and I didn't want to react to an anomaly, but the thing that we, we did, I personally said, and we got claps around the gym, is that, you know, we certainly want to make sure if we go forward, we talk to residents and give plenty of opportunity for people to talk and that has not happened yet. So I'll, I'll say, I, I know that it is going to be brought up in a future meeting and I'll be intrigued to see whether it stays on or whether it gets pushed to 2026, just to enable everyone to have conversations.
So my recollection of the discussion, when you asked to have it taken off, was that you were going to talk to the residents that had the wells and that we would revisit it.
Nope, you can watch the end of the, no, literally on the YouTube, I, when I acknowledged that, I did not have a chance to talk to people, that I would go and I have talked to some of the people that had sent the emails to me and I had, and I said, we may, didn't say we would, we may, and we chose, and we, as it played out, it didn't become a, a hot topic. It was something I had initially requested and when I realized that I didn't talk to the residents, which is something I found was a mistake on my behalf, and when I did, and every resident that had emailed me or had given me a phone call when we talked it through, I realized it was, it was really an anomaly that we had a crazy, crazy dry summer and I didn't, I didn't feel it was right to react to that. And then I won't go into the whole conversation that I had with the chair, but we had a very good conversation and I half anticipate this may get pushed to 2026, but I don't want to speak until they have their own conversation at their meeting.
Is the draft available somewhere? That's all.
Of what? You can have my list, right?
It's just the list, it's not.
It's on January. Thank you. No, I'm dead.
Any questions from anyone?
If my grocery list is on the back of that, I'm going to.
Is the account number there?
Oh, actually, there's, there's, or you can go there, either way.
Take charge over on 8 June for, for what you do as volunteers. People forget that. At last selectman's meeting, I was told that the warrant article would be opened up again and we would insert the conservation.
We actually don't have to do that because, Mark, do you want to give an update on the, the reason we're not opening it for?
We have a town bylaw that, step back a minute, it needs to be evidence of municipal acceptance when there's a transfer of property. We passed a bylaw some years ago that town meeting gave the authority, the select board, when an interest in property is transferred as part of a land use approval process, the select board is authorized to accept. That would apply in this case.
Great. Can I request that be accepted by the board this evening?
No, has to be on the agenda, has to be in proper form.
Yeah, that's, so we are, it will be presented and you'll see it in info packet. If not, it won't be the 25th, it'll be at the first meeting in March?
I think we're looking at April.
What's that?
I think we're looking at April. I think Mark needs some time to generate the documents.
It'll be before town meeting, though.
I would, I'm, I'm not doing it, so I would ask Mark to.
Let's just confirm.
It's not a big effort as far as a document. If you, thinking back, have signed on real estate transactions, a one-page document that says, on behalf of the town of Medfield, we hereby, as the select board, accept this. In this case, all we're going to do is also reference the bylaw, have an attested copy of that attached. And again, because in this case, this, this restriction was granted to the town years ago, so.
So could use a timeframe.
And the point being, when I send the document to the registry, I want to make sure that they're able to cross-reference it properly.
So I just want to make sure that this is done in a reasonable timeframe. So before town meeting, which is many.
Oh, absolutely.
So, so we could, if it's, I know it can't be next Tuesday because it's.
Right.
But get it done either the first week, the first meeting in March or the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to help me understand, is there a reason, we went from town meeting to first or second week of March, so there's a big difference. But my, my only real question is, this is an, I'll call it administrative, it's obviously legal, but for purposes, all operating, from an operational standpoint, there's nothing driving this, other than it's something that makes sense to do and we should do it.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And for, for the original document to have legal effect, there has to be some evidence of municipal acceptance. At the moment, there is no evidence of municipal acceptance, either by town meeting or the select board. Or anybody else.
So my real point is, the significance of us doing this is something that would affect the future.
Going forward.
This is not tied to anything that's gone on.
No.
This year.
So it will happen before town meeting?
Yes.
I just, because with, we've been going back and forth with this and.
This, this actually saves us, so we don't have to open the warrant, it's just something Mark can take care of with documents and we're done.
I agree. I wish we had that information before we started talking about warrant, make, putting it on the warrant and etc., etc.
I don't disagree, but I was giving a heads up within the last week that we didn't have to do it, so I was like, okay, as long as Mark will do what he needs to do from a legal standpoint.
It, in fact, the focus of actually doing it wasn't where the focus was, it was the fact it had not been done in decades and what do we do now? And we have several options to, to activate a document, which is basically a scenic restriction.
Well, I'll disagree slightly with Mark that it's, he's reducing it to basically a scenic restriction. That's not the way it's written in everyone's deed that's up on Griss Mill Lane and that's across the street. So there are 30 or 40 houses that feel that they have.
That's not what it is. I was actually on the planning board at the time this was negotiated in the first place.
Excellent. Now, that's really what I wanted to hear, because the last couple of meetings that this has come up, you have indicated that you, it was done before your time, you said at one point, and you also said it was, it was done a long time ago.
No, I didn't. I said I was on the planning board, I was before the time when I was town council. It was in the, it was in the mid to late, I became council on 94, so it, it happened in 92, I believe, when I was on the.
In order to protect the town's assets and ability to, for a variety of reasons, this conservation restriction should have been passed a long time ago.
Okay, that's why we're going to do it this way and it just makes it actually, the three of us can approve it and we're off the run.
That, that's great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Action items. So board and committee appointments. First one is for the 375th committee. We vote to appoint Marion Binaldi, Tracy Klink and Jerry Kazengian.
Yeah, so I had a question about this. This is not the committee, this is three people we're appointing to a committee that will undoubtedly be larger than this in the, between now and the end of the year or something like that.
I would think so. These three individuals came to us very excited, already have shared a lot of ideas and I think they're planning a really, really, really big 375th parade, from what I've overheard.
Oh, excellent, excellent. I was fascinated to realize that it's the 250th anniversary of the country this, that year, too.
2026.
And if there's elephants, the select board does not have to walk behind.
I would be really nice to Marion.
Or depending on who's truly.
I challenge you to find any elephant.
Well, let's hope the situation stays the same. Jerry, Jerry's big into parades.
So do you want to vote the three different times here? Or do you want to do it all at once?
Why don't we do all, we'll, we'll appoint all three of them to this committee and then do the next committee?
Okay. All right, wayfinding committee, vote to appoint Brittany Franklin, ex officiado.
Who are you going to vote on? I'd vote on that committee.
Oh, okay.
There's three names.
All right.
You ready?
Go.
Okay. I move that we appoint Marion Binaldi, Tracy Klink and Jerry Kazengian as members of the 375th committee.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, now move to wayfinding committee. Vote to appoint Brittany Franklin, ex officiado, Maria De La Fuente, ex officiado, and then vote to appoint Brandy Morris, Doug Lawrence, Jeff Hyman and Christine McQ Potts. And we had a meeting last week to kind of kick it all off. All of them were actually able, able to attend. I was the only official person because we had voted at last meeting, so it's all good.
Just curious, does this constitute probably the complete committee here?
Correct.
Ready? Okay, I move that we appoint Brittany Franklin as an ex officio member, Maria De La Fuente as an ex officio member, Brandy Morris, Doug Lawrence, Jeff Hyman and Christine McQ Potts as members of the wayfinding, I didn't say the wayfinding committee, as members of the wayfinding committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. There we go. Welcome on board. And then conservation committee, vote to appoint Nicholas Tawa. He was actually on their last meeting. He had a chance to introduce himself to the board. His resume, CRV is 16 pages long or something? Extensive, really nice gentleman and, you know, he's finally at a time, he's been a resident for many, many years, to be able to start to engage in different commissions and I think he's going to be a great addition.
I met him in the last several weeks. He's, he's a very impressive person.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Nicholas Tawa to the conservation commission.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Is that a, is that a full term or is that replacing somebody else's term?
That would be Kirsten Polers.
Replacing Kirsten's poller. Yep.
And what, do we know, that's a good question.
This year, this year, the appointees are Kat Stevens and Nicholas.
So it would be her unexpired term then?
Yes, so it would be on Kirsten's term, yes?
Yep.
What the record shows for the unexpired term.
Maria is one step ahead of me and has already changed her, the makeup of the conservation commission page, or actually probably Finn, so I will have to back to you with Kirsten's term. If I was in charge, it would still be up there. So, but just to fill her term, yes.
All right, and vote to renew the annual CAI contract to perform tax map maintenance services.
Yes, this is our annual contract, I believe it was 3,200 last year, it's going up to 3,500 this year.
I think it's two years, too. I could be mistaken.
It's just March 1st through April 30th, 26th. It's a little better.
But it's next year.
But, but it's not, it's not 24 months, it's 13 or 14 months.
Okay, any questions, Pete?
No, no, I'm fascinated they do it from Littleton, New Hampshire. It's the internet for you.
Ready? Okay, I move that we renew, approve the renewal of the annual CAI contract to perform tax map maintenance services. Term of the contract is March 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2026. Rate is $3,500 plus $20 per new changed building.
Yes. Yeah, no. Oh, do we need, I wasn't sure if you were asking for clarification on the new buildings.
It was just an overwhelming agreement on the board and the, for the town administrator.
I think it was change to properties, not buildings, but.
No, it's, it's changed the buildings.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you make a motion second?
Yes, all right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
We brought our A game tonight, if anybody.
All right, and let's see, vote to authorize the town administrator to renew electricity and natural gas utility contracts.
So we're seeking this authorization because if you recall from a few years ago, when Frank and I became experts in the municipal energy trading market, we get updates, I think they come in about 4:30 every morning, and we have very little time in which to pick them, so I can't hold a meeting. So if you authorize us, we work also with Michael La Francesca to make sure we're getting the best energy rates going forward, so I like that. We don't have much time to make the decision.
How often do you guys have to do this?
Our last contract was two years, so it's every two years.
Not every day, good.
Yeah, and they offer us one-year contracts, two-years, up to a three-year, depending on what the rate is. We may pick the three-year, but.
You've, you've, when you're actually doing it, you, you may only have a couple of hours to lock in. We do the same thing in Friday.
Yeah, we're usually texting by about 7:30 AM, so.
Does this require any allocation of town's Bitcoin reserve?
That's a separate vote we're taking.
All right, we're ready. All right, I move that we authorize the town administrator to renew electricity and natural gas utility contracts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, and vote.
Is there a term for that or is that just indefinite from here forward until we tell you to stop?
Till, till we sign this contract, that's good, yeah.
Vote to declare a snow emergency and authorize deficit spending.
So we are, prior to the storm this past weekend, we are about 85% through our snow and ice budget, so we are most likely going to head into deficit spending, so we'd like to get that vote before they run payroll for this past ice storm.
Yikes. They've been out there and I hear them.
I move that we declare a snow emergency and authorize deficit spending.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
I walked from my office to Brother's today and the sidewalk was absolutely clear. It was just phenomenal what the DPW had done.
Great.
All right, no meeting minutes. Town administrator update.
Just a couple of things. I did have some sad news to share. You know, we lost a long-term employee at the town hall. One of our building commissioners passed away and I also was notified today that we lost Marjorie Temple, wife of David Temple and was a longtime employee here. It was one of the, actually, one of the very first employees I met on my walk from the parking lot to the town hall when she was working as the principal assessor, so very[1727.87] when she was working as the principal assessor, so very sad to, to pass that on.
She was a wonderful person and it was just a wonderful obituary that the family wrote for her.
It was beautiful. A little happier news, our police dog Nora celebrated her first birthday, which was quite lovely.
I missed that.
Well, we weren't sure if you'd want to go down and make the stuffy dogs, but rumor has it, I think there is one still for you. And then just a reminder, everybody, we have a special meeting next Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:30 to hear the discussion about the proposal for the state hospital. That's all I have. And you should have your updated town administrator reports for February, and those will be posted online first thing tomorrow.
Thank you for doing those.
You're welcome.
You know what I noticed, I didn't announce, because we don't have, no citizens comment?
I didn't have any citizens comment.
Okay, let's check. All right, so now we jump to meeting dates. So we've got next Tuesdays, as you just referenced, meeting 25th. And then two in March, March 4th and March 18th. March 31st will be the annual municipal elections. And select board meetings, April 1st, April 15th. We've got a placeholder for the meeting before our annual town meeting, which is May 5th.
I think, I anticipate I'll get out of town on March 4th, so depending on what the agenda is, maybe fine just to go ahead with...
Okay, let's, I, we were anticipating, I'd have to look back at my, I believe, my fire chief process. I think we were looking at doing the interviews on the 4th, but we can move that to the 18th.
Oh, for the fire chief, okay.
Yep.
Select board member reports. Pete, there you go.
I had someone from the Plain Street 40B neighborhood come and talk to me at my office hours. I also did a review of our town administrator. I've been working with the Zulu, and people saw that the Zulu is, has been offered to, an opportunity to buy their building, by the current owner of the building. Very short timeframe for them to react to it. And then personally, I had cataract surgery and discovered that, man, can you see better when you get rid of the cataracts. So that's it for me.
Excellent.
Quiet two weeks. The only, I think I had mentioned that the MBTA advisory committee meeting was the day following our last meeting. So there's probably a better report now after the meeting where I can tell you what happened. So the MBTA, if anybody follows the MBTA, is, is facing a major fiscal cliff. They basically used virtually all of their reserve funds to, to basically fund the FY '25 budget. And they've been very, very visible and vocal about that. The good news is, I think, when we went to the MMA meeting, the governor and the lieutenant governor acknowledged the issues that they were facing. The legislature acknowledges the issues they're facing, and so it looks like the state will take some action. I think the governor, among other things, was trying to get the, the remaining debt that was on the MBTA books from the Big Dig off the MBTA books or, or otherwise paid up, so that, that's one of the things that's been dragging them down. One of the interesting things that came out on the, on the meeting was that ridership, a year ago, they were saying ridership hadn't recovered from COVID. Now it appears that ridership has pretty much recovered from COVID. But the interesting thing about that is the makeup of the ridership is not the return of commuters going into Boston. It's a lot of other people that are using public transit, transport to get in, in and out of Boston, which I would think is probably a good sign for the long-term health of the T. So that, that part's good. Philip Eng, the head of the T, who came from the New York, whatever his metropolitan address is, came in with a good reputation, and I've heard nothing but good things about him. He came and talked at one of our meetings and was very well spoken, but it seems like he's doing a great job. So for anybody who rides the T, it's looking a little brighter for what the long-term future of the T is gonna be. And that's it.
As I mentioned earlier, I, we had our Wayfinders introduction meeting last week. So it was nice to meet the company that's been contracted. They introduced them, themselves, we introduced ourselves, we kind of talked about just different towns that they've worked on and just, just a good kickoff. And then they gave us a timeline as to, kind of what they plan to do over the four stages of the program. We had our kickoff, meeting with the police for the contract, which is great, of those guys. And they mentioned, too, I had a chance to meet a couple of the Concom members. Super good meetings and kind of just getting their perspective on some of the things that are going on with some of the topics that are going on around town, that I've got phone calls on, just wanted to hear from them. So it's all good. All good? All right, we are going to wind down and go into executive session, so that we can...
Pending a threat in litigation.
Yes, so that we read my lingo here. We have vote to enter into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. The open session will not reconvene at the conclusion of the meeting.
You have to declare also that an open meeting would be prejudicial to the town's bargaining position.
Yes, the open meeting would be detrimental to the town negotiating position.
Ready?
Yes.
I move that we enter into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. The chair has, has determined that an open meeting would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position. The open session will not reconvene at the conclusion of the meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Oh, roll call, that's right. Pete?
Aye aye.
Aye.
All right, Eileen, aye aye, good to go. Great, off we go, who, who, who.